All this feeding the order quick all rise.
Join me in prayer. Our Father in heaven, we come before thee this day to meet as a county commission to consider the business of the county. Father bless us as we as we move forward with today's agenda that we will keep open minds, that we will contemplate, that we will make decisions that that are in the best interest of our constituents. Father, at this time we'd ask that thou would bless our first responders, especially our police in our community, the firefighters in our community, especially during this time of year. Fathers, as we draw close to Christmas and the Christmas season, we would ask that thou would bless those that that are in need of thy comfort, that you would reach out to them, any of those that are struggling, that thou would bless them and and let them fill with thy spirit and thy comforting camp. Father, we ask for these things and we recognize and understand that all that we have comes from thee and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we jump into the old business before we approve the agenda? Yes, I know it's ordered that way, but is that?
Mr. Chairman, that's how we've previously, since this was an old business item.
Okay.
That we would consider that item first, if you wish to bring it to the table, and then approve the new items on the agenda.
Okay, well, I will stand for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to bring the county commission redistricting plan off of the table.
Second, having been moved and seconded to consider the old business of consideration of the county commission redistricting plan is, having been motioned and moved and seconded, is there any any discussion? Not hearing any, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. So it brings us to old business item number one, which is the consideration of the redistricting plan. And that is going to be presented by Mr. Stark and Adair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So as you know, this item was tabled from the last meeting until today. This has been the process that the county commission has been engaged with since early November when Mr. Adair first appeared before this body to present proposed plans for redistricting. Of course, with the loss in population that we experienced with the 2020 census, that of course necessitates the need to redistrict because we lost approximately 8,000 people. And so we're required, the county commission is required to redraw commission boundaries in order to comply with the one person, one vote principle established by the U.S. Constitution. And as you know, Mr. Adair, we contracted with him as a consultant to assist with this process. And just for the benefit of those who are with us in the audience today, the guidelines used to redraw the boundaries include the following: District shall be equal in population as practical, with a population that deviates plus or minus 5% from the ideal. San Juan County's population was 121,661 in this past census. Therefore, the ideal population in each district would be 24,332. Districts shall not be comprised comprised of split precincts. Districts shall be contiguous precincts and reasonably compact, with an attempt to preserve communities of interest. And last but not least, they should now shall not dilute protected minorities' voting strength. So as you know, we've conducted a public hearing, public comment, input session here on November 30th. You all considered various plans at the last meeting. One of those plans that was considered and discussed was an A4 plan. Since that meeting and as a result of feedback from the county commission, Mr. Adair prepared an A5 plan that we've had available to the public in the lobby as well as on the website since the last meeting. I believe Mr. Adair is with us tonight remotely, so I'd like to turn it over to him, Mr. Chair, with your permission, to allow him to explain the differences between the A4 plan that you saw at the last meeting and then this A5 plan that's also directly behind you. So with your permission, I would turn it over to him.
Very well, Mr. Adair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I believe that the only the only change that we finally made in the version of A4 to A5 was that we moved precinct 12 in District 2 to District 1, and then we moved precinct 18 from District 1 to District 2. And it gives you the image you can see on the screen there. And results in everything, of course, being within deviation limits, 4.27% below the ideal in District 1, 0.89% above District 2, 3.51 and 0.9% above in Districts 3 and 4, and minus 1.04% in District 5. And with regard to the key percentages regarding ethnicity, it leaves the non-Hispanic Indian population in District 1. Get over here to my percentages. 82.67% in District 1, and 52.32% in District 2, and then 36.66% in District 5. And so that that was that were the changes, those were the changes that created Plan A5. So this is this is an excellent plan. It it moves 700 non-Hispanic Native Americans from District 1 to District 2, moves an additional 1,462 non-Hispanic Native Americans from Districts 3, 4, and 5, and puts them in District 2. Altogether, District 2 increased from 10,683 non-Hispanic Native Americans to 12,845, which is an increase of 20.24% in Native American population in District.
Native Americans out of what? Let me see.
Mr. Adair, I think your connection is cutting in and out. We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. I don't know where my microphone.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay.
The last, maybe it's the last part that you didn't hear, perhaps, in the final analysis, Plan A5 removes 700 non-Hispanic Native Americans from District 1 to District 2, and it moves an additional 1,462 non-Hispanic Native Americans from Districts 3, 4, and 5, and puts them in District 2. What this results in is that District 2, in District 2, the number of non-Hispanic Native Americans is increased from 10,683 to 12,845, which is an increase of 20.24%, 20.24% over the current district rate. Well, this becomes an excellent plan for San Juan County.
And it meets all of the statutory requirements?
It certainly does.
What about, Mr. Chairman, what about, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Adair, what about Plan A?
Plan A, well, just to kind of recap what has been done, I noticed a communication from the Navajo Nation and the use of the term majority-minority, which is an awkward term in a way. The reality is that all nine published plans produce three majority-minority districts, Districts 1, 2, and 5, in each and every plan. What what the Navajo Nation is probably referring to is majority Indian, majority non-Hispanic Indian, as opposed to majority-minority. The fact is that seven of the nine published plans produce a non-Hispanic Indian majority in Districts 1 and 2 in each of those seven plans. The only exceptions are Plans A and A1. The reason that Plan A exists is that, generally speaking, we start out with an effort to make a new set of districts with the fewest possible moves, chess moves, or whatever you want to say they are, moving the least number of precincts in order to achieve a legally allowable deviation, hitting the 5% mark in each of five districts. So Plan A, the least changed display that the county commission could look at. However, as has been repeatedly emphasized, even though it was the least changed plan, it left District 2 with a lower percentage of Indian population than it currently has, which is something that is not recommended. Plan A1, which was not proposed by New Mexico Demographic Research, which we drew based on input from the county commission, made that percentage even lower than Plan A. So Plan A and Plan A1 are the only two plans out of the nine that are before the commission that do not raise the percentage of non-Hispanic Indians in District 2. That's the answer to that question. Was everybody able to hear that or not?
Yes, we heard it. Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Mr. Adair, I wasn't sure if you were done with your presentation.
I I'm ready to stand for questions.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Adair, you know, in my district, I live in Crystal, Nashua, and Sheep Springs. And I just wanted to share some thoughts with you. You know, my grandparents and relatives, my maternal side are in Crystal. And then my paternal grandparents and relatives are in the Sheep Springs area. And then my grandparents used to migrate off the mountain to Two Gray Hills, so I grew up in Two Gray Hills. And then I started school at Tohale Boarding School. And later on, I went to Central Consolidated School. And then I, my mom was a nurse, so she worked at the old Indian Health Service Hospital. And so we moved to Shiprock. And right, I graduated from Shiprock and I, the Navajo Nation said, go get a degree, come back and help your people. So I came back and I was an educator. And so I worked within central consolidated school system till I retired. After I retired, politics seemed interesting to me. So I became a chapter vice president, and then I moved on and I became a Navajo Nation council delegate. And then I ran from outside the Navajo Nation, but still representing Navajos is the county commission. So I'm homegrown. I I know Northern Navajo Nation agency because I worked with the chapter delegates or the council delegates in that area. So I know there. My only connection with Eastern Agency in District 1 is that my grandmother, she was part of that Cobell settlement. And as an heir, we did receive a little money, so with oil and gas. So this is my history. And I know that my fellow commissioners grew up in communities, in the neighboring communities. They went to high school here. They they probably coached teams here. They shop at the local stores, just like I do in my area. And so when it came time to run for office, it was quite successful for me. But I I know that the county has always respected the boundaries of the Navajo Nation. They respected Navajo Nation sovereignty. I kept thinking, there are certain ways that the county and Navajo Nation works works together, government to government. And it's been fairly good. I mean, there was no gerrymandering that was going on. We, as neighbors, work very well together. I do, you know, I'm sad that I'll miss the Crystal, Nashua, Sheep Springs area. But I know that we have to look at population and somehow juggle these figures. And I think I can live with a decision that we're probably going to have to decide on soon. But I, I think the plan where I'll have, we'll be doing some give and take with precincts in our districts. And I can live with that, fellow Commissioners, because this is just something that is put upon us every 10 years. And we're thinking of our constituents. There's people who vote us in because they want us to represent them. And I know the rural area. And I think the west side of La Plata is going to end up in my district. And I know that a lot of Navajos are moving into the town areas because they they miss the services that they don't get on the Navajo Nation. So I do see the population kind of leaving the reservation or the Navajo Nation and going into the neighboring towns. I guess I have to live with the decision that we're going to make. And I'm probably, the people, my constituents in Crystal, Sheep Springs, and they will ask, what happened here? And I guess I'll have to explain to them how this works. And I guess we have to live with these changes. There's communities of color. I know that we have a lot of non-Navajos who work on the reservation or on the Navajo Nation, but they just work there. They live in the neighboring communities, and they vote over there, and they live over there, and they like that. I guess that's the same as Navajos who are very strong with their chapters. And even though they live in town, they will always come back to vote during Navajo elections in their chapters. So I I guess I have to decide tonight what is best. They'll work for the precincts. And but I just wanted to state that I I do think I miss that area in the corner with Crystal. And I guess it was nice when we were packed 88%, but we didn't know the benefits of it as as that district area. So we didn't have increase in services or anything. But now we're told that that's not good for us and that we need to distribute the Navajo Nation vote more. So I guess I can live with the new boundaries that we're considering. So but when constituents ask, I guess I know how to explain what occurred here, that we have the population numbers that we have to look at. So I guess if, at the time when we vote, I'll be ready.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one moment. Hold your thought. I know last time we read statements into the record. Do we need to do that again today? We can do it at the end of all the comments or at the end of discussion, but I just want to make sure that that's the plan for what we should do today.
Mr. Chairman.
Any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, I stand ready to share with you these comments that we received from the last meeting up until today.
Okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, sir, I was just going to make a motion to approve Plan A.
Okay, it's been moved. It's been moved that we approve Plan A. Is there a second? Is there a second? Without a second, the motion dies for lack of second. Is there any further discussion? Without a second, the motion dies for lack of second. Is there any further discussion? Any questions? Mr. Stark, will you read the new comments into the record, please?
You'd be happy to do so. Mr. Chairman, the first comment is from Leonard Gorman, received on December 14th. Good afternoon. The Office of Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission Office received the San Juan County Plan A format this afternoon on November 30th, 2021. The Office commented on San Juan County Commission redistricting maps A, B, and C. All of these plans pack Native American voting age population into District One. The Plan A four again packs NAVAP into District One. Plan A four is not acceptable. Let me reiterate, Navajo Nation Plan unpacks District One to ensure that the NAVAP are shared with District Two, which extends onto the Navajo Nation. Voting Rights Act of 1965 provides minority population the opportunity to present majority-minority districts that demonstrate minority population having the ability to elect a candidate of their choice. The Navajo Nation's Plan satisfies the VRA Voting Rights Act by presenting a county map that has plus 63% NAVAP in Districts One and Two. Now, the Office is open to sitting down with the County, San Juan County Commission to go over the Navajo Nation map in order to understand why the Navajo Nation Plan presents plus 63% NAVAP in two districts. The next comment is from, is from Mr. Terry Eagle. And I believe this was sent to a couple of different Commissioners, but I'm reading the one that was sent to Commissioner Beckstead. I am a longtime resident of San Juan. And in addition to being a veteran, I'm also retired law enforcement. I'm opposed to any changes to the voting districts and respectfully request that the County Commission does not fall prey to this political hysteria that is sweeping across the nation. San Juan County has long been a conservative and family-based community, and I for one wish to see that continue. Thank you for your service as a Commissioner. The next comment is from Mr. Michael Freestone. This comment was redistricting. I believe that A four is the best option for the county. San Juan County has the greatest opportunity to keep those of similar culture associated and undiluted. Rural with rural, farming with farming, urban with urban. That way, the needs of the association are not diluted and covered by a larger population with disparate goals and needs. Now, the next comment is from Ms. Darcy Moss. Commissioners, I have had the opportunity to preview all of the maps and plans on the new redistricting. I see Plan A five is the plan that fits San Juan County. It changes the diversity in all districts. The way that San Juan County is set up with the Navajo Nation being on the west side makes it a hard decision. Breaking up Districts One and Two and half disenfranchises the rest of the county. That is why I choose Plan A five. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from Ms. Mary Ray. Her comment was, please consider tabling, voting on redistricting for now so more study can be done and more input from citizens of pain. The next comment is from Mr. Gorman. This is as of December 20th. And he's attached a resolution supporting the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission Plan. It's a fairly lengthy resolution, Commissioner. I could read that if you so chose. We have two, two resolutions, one from Northern Navajo Agency Council and then District 13 Council. You all have copies of these comments in front of you. So.
Have all the Commissioners read the resolutions? Yes.
Okay.
I think if you just make a record that they are, that they've been read by the Commission and are a part of the record.
Okay. We'll do that. And I'll present those to the County Clerk as well for inclusion in the record. I do have two others. I'm sorry. I thought I had finished them all. Looks like Ms. Shawna Abney. December 15th. Good morning. I'm asking you to vote no on any county redistricting. Our county does not need to be controlled by the liberal side of the aisle. We are a conservative county for a reason, and the majority of SJC and Bloomfield residents have conservative values and ideas. Thank you for keeping our county conservative strong. And then the last comment I have here is a comment we received from ACLU, New Mexico, this afternoon at 2:00. Once again, a fairly long comment. It is in front of you. But I certainly could read that as well. It's of interest.
Has everyone read the letter from the ACLU, New Mexico? It appears that everybody has read that. If we could just attach that and make that part of the record survey.
That concludes the comment we've received since the last meeting.
Is there, are there any other questions or any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to add that I, I agree with, with Commissioner Totacini. It's hard. And you start looking at these and you're giving up some of your constituents. Sometimes it's your family, friends. It's family. It's people that you know. My own daughter won't be in my district now. And so, you know, it does become very personal when you start looking at it. So I just want everybody to know that, that this is not something that the, the Commission just sets up here and, and takes advice and, and listens to these comments and then kind of brushes it off. I think almost every Commissioner has spent time with, with Tanya Shelby, our County Clerk. She, she's worked hours. I know with me, because I'm, I'm not very smart and I have to go over the numbers twice. So I appreciate that and the staff as well. So, you know, with that, if there's no other comments, I would, I would make the motion to, to pass Plan A five.
I'll second that.
Can I second? I'd rather second it because I can live with it and because it impacts my district. And whatever comes my way, you know, with my Navajos, I, it's, it's homeland. That's my homeland. And what, what we, and I know I, I sat with Tanya and we took a lot of things and figures. And I, I see this as the most workable plan for us. And, and it'll change in 10 years again. So, but I, I, I'd like to second that, be there to second that motion.
Having been moved by Commissioner Lanier and seconded by Commissioner Totacini, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It appears as though it passes with a four to one vote. Moving on to the rest of the agenda, we're now moving into our regular meeting. Brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there, are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Stark?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there are no changes to the agenda presented tonight.
Okay. I'll stand for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appears as though it passed unanimously. Brings us to our consent agenda, which is item number one, consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes of December 7th, 2021. And number two, consideration of approval for stipend for crisis negotiation deputies from the Sheriff's Office. Is there anyone that wishes to remove an item from the consent, consent agenda and move it to regular business? Not hearing anything. I'll stand for a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Appears that it passed unanimously. Brings us to new business, item number one, which is consideration of resolution number 21-22-38 authorizing San Juan County to enter into settlement agreements with opioid distributors to resolve opioid litigation and authorizing county manager to execute documents necessary to effectuate county's participation in settlement agreements. That was clearly written by a lawyer and it's gonna be presented by ours, Joe's lawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll try to make the description shorter than the title. But in 2018, this, the Commission authorized a lawsuit against opioid manufacturers, retailers, and distributors to try to recoup some of the cost that the county incurred treating opioid addictions that were caused by the distributors, retailers, and manufacturers. I think we're all aware of the, the opioid abuse epidemic. It began in the 1990s. Just in 2016 alone, opioid overdoses accounted for more than 42,000 deaths. So we entered into this lawsuit with 3,000 other counties and municipalities. And our law firm was Kruger Dickinson. And they represented probably a thousand of the counties and municipalities. And with the other law firms, they were able to negotiate financial settlement with the big, what they call the big three distributors, which are McKesson, AmerisourceBergen, and Cardinal Health. And so this agreement is for $21 billion, spread over the 3,000 counties and states. And as you recall, part of the settlement requirements was that the state attorney general enter into the agreements as well. And we were waiting for New Mexico Attorney General Hector Valdériz to agree to bring in New Mexico. He was a little hesitant because he felt that the, the settlement was based on population. It should be based on the harm that was caused. And under the settlement, New Mexico will get 0.86% of the settlement. Also, under the settlement, when all is said and done, San Juan County could obtain as much as $3.8 million. That would be spread over 18 years, though. So that would be approximately $211,000 per year. And it would need to be spent on opioid abuse areas, you know, like benefiting our, our, you know, our opioid treatment programs, things like that. What we are asked, the staff is asking you to do tonight is to approve the resolution that's in your packet that would authorize the county to enter into the lawsuit and it would authorize our county manager to, to sign any agreements that are necessary. Those agreements will then be put in escrow. And in the meantime, the New Mexico Attorney General, the counties, and the cities are all going to get together and try to decide how to split up the proceeds of the settlement. And so once that's decided, then the, the documents will be released and we'll be able to start receiving proceeds as early as April 2022. So that was long, but that's what's gonna happen.
Any questions, comments? Not hearing any. I'll stand for a motion.
I'll move that we approve the resolution number 21-22-38.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion, questions? Not hearing any. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. I presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to item number two, which is consideration for award of bid number 21-22-07, Kirtland Schools Walk Path Phase Two to TRC Construction Incorporated of Flora Vista, New Mexico. Ms. Chapman?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm here to present the consideration for award of bid 21-22-07, Kirtland Schools Walk Path Phase Two. On October 31st, 2021, Central Purchasing issued requests for sealed bids for the Walk Path Phase Two. Thirty-four invitations were mailed out. And on December 7th, 2021, we received one bid. The bid response was reviewed by the staff and the project engineer. A subsequent bid review and negotiation between San Juan County and TRC Construction Incorporated was held on December 14th, resulting in a reduction of $26,296 in base bid price. The staff recommends award of bid number 21-22-07, Kirtland Schools Walk Path Phase Two to TRC Construction Incorporated of Flora Vista, New Mexico, as the overall low bidder. The award will be for the base bid amount of $709,285.60, plus NMGRT of $47,876.78, for a total award of $757,162.38. The construction contract will be funded in part by $640,000 in Transportation Alternatives Program grant funding from New Mexico Department of Transportation. The remaining $117,162.38 will be funded by the county capital reserves. So we are requesting the consideration for award of bid 21-22-07, Kirtland Schools Path Walk Path Phase Two be awarded to TRC Construction Incorporated of Flora Vista, New Mexico.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Are you comfortable with just one bid? There, maybe there's some good stuff about the company.
Using grant monies. And in this, we had to have a mandatory pre-bid meeting. At the mandatory pre-bid meeting, we only had one person show up. And so they were our only bid, and they were within budget, and they did meet our guidelines. And they are local. So yes, we are comfortable. Other people had the opportunity to bid, but did not. We were surprised as well. We were expecting at least one another. But perhaps they have too much business or weren't available.
And, and this is, the, the amount is within normal construction cost?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We did a little negotiation on the side of, we thought a couple of his pricing were a bit high, like for clearing the area. There wasn't much to do. Some other aspects that Nick Perel identified. And they agreed to look at it again, and they did come down on their pricing.
Mr. Chairman, I might add, it was a 4% reduction in their initial bid, so.
Any other questions? I'll stand for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve award bid number 21-22-07.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any. Those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Not hearing any. I presume it passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Which brings us to item number three, which is consideration of resolution number 21-22-39, a resolution authorizing the use of coronavirus state and local recovery funds presented by Mike Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's hard to believe. It's almost 22 months that we've been fighting through this pandemic and, and still not quite the light at the end of the tunnel we'd like to see. But one of the things that I know has been true since the start of this is that our employees have been here for the citizens of San Juan County and making sure that we're providing the essential services that so many of our citizens depend on. And, and it, and it covers all the roles here in the county. Obviously, public safety being most front and center with responding to calls and detention officers at the detention center. We've conducted two elections. The County Clerk's done two elections during this time and, and trying to make sure we're obviously keeping people safe, but still maintaining their right to get to the polls and vote. Three? Did I miss one? A primary. Thank you. I only think of the big ones. They're all big. And so before you tonight is, is a resolution authorizing the use of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. It was signed into law by President Biden, Biden on March 11th. It was signed into law by President Biden on March eleventh of this year. And under the act, the county can expend these funds. A lot of ways they can expend the funds. And you all, as you have all already approved a draft plan. But one of the ways that you can use these dollars is to provide workers performing essential work during the COVID-nineteen public health emergency, to provide them with premium pay for eligible workers. And premium pay is additional income. It's defined as additional income paid for by state and local recovery funds. It can be provided to essential workers who have been and continue to be relied on to maintain continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors, quoting those who are critical to protecting the health and well-being of their various communities. And under the interim final rule guidance, and you know, we've been waiting, as you know, for final guidance, and that hasn't been forthcoming, but we're absolutely able to use interim final rule guidance from the U.S. Department of Treasury, all local government employees are deemed to be eligible workers. And premium pay is authorized for eligible workers who perform essential service work as defined in thirty-one CFR Part thirty-five. And so we thought the timing of this would be appropriate to bring to you, given that our employees have done so much over the last twenty-one-plus months. Of course, you know, the timing with the holidays gets into this as well. But staff would recommend that all county employees, volunteer firefighters, early voting and day workers, employees of the Criminal Justice Training Authority, San Juan Water Commission, San Juan County Communications Authority, first T. And then we've also added, and this is different from the resolution that's before you, but one of the groups we didn't capture when we were putting this together was reserve deputies at the sheriff's office. They have certainly been sacrificing and volunteering their time. We would like to provide each of those employees, providing that essential work on premises. And that's the condition of the American Rescue Plan Act, and we've verified that is the case for all these employees, a one-time gross payment of thirteen hundred dollars. Associated taxes and deductions would be taken out, depending upon everybody's individual tax structure. For those employees that have worked a hundred hours, and so under premium pay, you're eligible to pay up to thirteen dollars an hour. So thirteen times a hundred hours would get you to the thirteen hundred gross amount. For early voting and election day workers, working with the county clerk, determined, since they don't work a full year's schedule, that they would be eligible to earn up to seven dollars per hour worked, up to seven hundred dollars. Volunteer firefighters would be eligible for up to thirteen hundred dollars. Every nominal fee would equate to an hour. Every hour that a sheriff's office reserve deputy has put in would equate to an hour that would be paid up to thirteen hundred dollars. And anybody that just started with the county, what we would suggest, and the line in the sand that we put in the resolution is as of today. So if you're an active employee, as of today, you would have the ability to count hours going back to March of last year, March third, all the way up to January twenty-second. So the assumption would be that a full-time employee that just started could work their hundred hours in person and would be eligible for the thirteen hundred dollar payment. We wouldn't be able to authorize those payments until they've worked their hundred hours. And so, but it would be a prorata-type payment. Likewise, for anybody that hadn't worked all the way up, so you're a volunteer firefighter that put in twenty hours between that timeframe, you would get your twenty, twenty hours of pay at thirteen dollars an hour. So elected officials, because of statutory caps set by New Mexico law, would not be eligible for the additional payment. So that's.
Sorry.
I'm sorry to disappoint there. But we would strongly suggest that this would be the right way to provide this premium pay to our employees, employees who have truly sacrificed so much, have been on the front of front lines and responding to the COVID needs of our community. It certainly would make for a nice holiday surprise for a lot of our employees and families here in the county. So.
Well, I know you had me sold at volunteer firefighter and reserve deputies because those are two groups of people who put in a tremendous amount of work and volunteer their time. They are really the true gems of our county. And you had me sold at that. You know, I want to recognize all the rest of our paid employees. But for those volunteers, I mean, it absolutely, every time I think about it, touches me with what they do for our community. I love going to basketball games and seeing the reserve deputies. I know a few of them and love to give them a hard time. And it's great to see them there. It's great to see them performing that service to our community. And this is just a little way to give back to them. But you had me sold at that. So I'll stand for any other, did you have more?
One more comment, Mr. Chair. So we set it up to, you know, we do have a lot of giving employees that serve in numerous roles. So just to make sure we're maintaining consistency, the maximum amount that one employee could be paid, premium pay on would be thirteen hundred dollars. So that's the cap, and that's in the resolution as well. And the resolution in your packet did not include sheriff's deputies, but the resolution that we would suggest that you all take action on is the one that's in your signature folder that does include the sheriff's reserve deputies.
Okay.
And so staff would recommend approval of resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two dash thirty-nine.
I'll stand for any questions or comments.
That we approve resolution twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-nine.
I'll second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Oh, the transfer station, I mean, they're out in the coal, and it's a dirty, we're there. They included it, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totacini, all full-time employees, part-time employees, temporary employees, in addition to all the others, would be covered. And like I said, if they've worked a hundred hours, you'd be going back to March or to January, they would be receiving a payment. And I must say, kudos to our finance department, treasurer's office, payroll department with, if this is approved by the commission, the full-time employees, part-time, temporaries, all those that we process payroll for today, you know, organizations. We don't process payroll for, process nominal fees for the volunteer fire department, firefighters, and we don't do anything for the sheriff's reserve deputies, but we will be getting those payments out a couple of weeks from now. But all employees of those organizations I mentioned would receive their payment tomorrow. So they're willing to work through tonight to get that out to everybody in advance of the Christmas holiday. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that we're faced with a lot of decisions up here, and a couple of them this year. I mean, I know Terry and I have only been on almost a year exactly, but we've had some pretty tough decisions. This was not one of those. This is probably the easiest decision for me to make.
All right. Not hearing any further discussion or questions. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. I presume it passed unanimously. Which brings us to, I'm just going to skip over the report of McPhee. No.
I have a report for you tonight. All right, let's hear it. Mr. Claus, thank you. I mean, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity to present some items for you. Just wanted you all to know that we are working staff to sit down and go through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act bill. That's the infrastructure bill to see how those, what programs are available. You know, how will the funding be distributed? Will it be distributed directly from federal agencies to various governments? Will it be funded to each of the states? And then the states will figure out the means by which they'll distribute those dollars. But our goal is to make sure that San Juan County maximizes any of those dollars for any of our potential eligible programs, projects. So more to come on that. And there's quite a bit in here, just so you know. It's a lot to absorb and digest, but I want you to know we're certainly working on that. We also have a new testing site, and kudos to Mike Mestes and emergency management. We're putting together a new curative testing site, also working with the city of Farmington. It's at the Old Tibbetts Library, and they're able to do rapid PCRs and reported to have results back in two weeks, or two days, rather. I'm sorry. Two hours. Two days is what we have now. Two hours. And they're available at the Old Tibbetts Library, Monday through Friday, twelve to seven, and Saturday and Sunday, nine AM to four PM. The other curative site at McGee Park will, this will be the only site that offered the rapid PCRs, be the normal PCR over at McGee Park. Of course, we have other options available for our employees, and of course, there's other options available for the community through urgent care reliance, other providers in our community. But I want you to be aware of this new option that actually will, I think we'll get quite a bit of usage, given that it's such a quick turnaround on those results. So, and we also are monitoring, you may have heard that the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals did find, lifted the stay on the OSHA emergency temporary standard and have put out some new timelines related to that. So January tenth, assuming there's not a challenge to the Supreme Court, would be the date by which we would have to make a decision on the preferred route for the county. I know there's been some preliminary discussions about that. There's two options. One's a mandatory vaccination policy. The other one's a testing and face covering policy. So we're going to monitor this activity here through the holidays to see if this does get taken up by the Supreme Court and another stay is issued. But we want you to know, we are ready as an organization to bring forth to you at the January fourth meeting a policy for your consideration adoption, and then to quickly move to survey employees on vaccinations status, and if you so choose to move forward with the testing and face covering policy. And then we'll have until February ninth to actually implement that. So just wanted you to be aware of this, that we're monitoring it, and we'll see what comes up of it in the next week or two, and then have an item for you on January fourth. And outside of that, I just would like to, from my office, wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year from all the staff in the CEO's office, and quite frankly, all our employees countywide. So thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to say I appreciate, in my first year being on the commission, all the support that we've had and all the reports that we have given in such a timely fashion and all the information that's fed us. It's quite accurate. And at times, it's challenging, but we've gotten a lot of support in trying to decipher and come up with each decision. So I would appreciate my colleagues, commissioners, and all the hard work that goes behind the scenes and up here to prepare for these meetings. So certainly, thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other reports from elected officials or department heads?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add that I'd like to thank Tanya. Oh, we worked hard to take a look at the maps and the precincts, and she was so wonderful. And also her worker, Arlinda.
Arlinta.
Yeah, Arlinda really helped. And then I want to thank our fire chief. I know when we had that fire out in Shiprock with the old IHS burning down, he assisted. And I really like the working relationship, you know, we're neighbors here, and it always works. And then I just read the article on the sheriff on what he's been going through. And bless you and your family and your workers for what you've been doing for the community. So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I just wanted to give you a heartfelt thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Stark for providing that wonderful gift to all county employees. As we mentioned earlier by Commissioner Beckstead, our volunteers who, I don't know how we would, how we would do it without our fire volunteers, just a great group of individuals. Our reserve deputies come to our rescue as we are lacking the manpower on there to keep our deputies safe on the street, allow, you know, a single car with two deputies to go to a call really creates some relief from the call volume that can add up. So thank you so much. And I know there's a lot of hard work in county employees out here. They are loyal to this county. They are servants to this community, great-hearted people, and many of them need that extra money just to get by and tell them some hardship. So thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Hey, on behalf of the San Juan County Commission, I'd like to thank everyone for all of their service and all the employees. I'd like to wish you happy holidays and.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Chairman and members of the commission, if I could also just extend the appreciation to Sharice.
I think you need to state your name.
Extend the appreciation to Sharice with G.I.S. I know that she, even through our, you know, in two thousand nineteen, when we were working on all of our precincts, and then, of course, this year, and then with redistricting. It's a lot of times, it's the people behind the scenes that do an extent amount of work to make us all look good and successful, right? So she worked really hard. Even though she's super busy, she always found time for us. So I appreciate that. And thank you all and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm not as tall as Shane, so. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I also want to thank you very much for approving the extra pay for the holidays. Do appreciate that. I come before you, just keep you apprised of what's going on in the county with COVID. Currently, we have twelve employees that are out on COVID leave. Some of them are even were in the hospital, and they're in the doctor's care at home right now, going through oxygen therapy or whatever. And then we do have some that are just out on COVID leave. I would expect by this time next week, we should be down to single digits. About a month and a half ago in November, we were up at thirty employees out on COVID leave. So we're doing much better now here in December. Next week, you know, I'll let Mr. Stark know if we're down to the single digits. So just want to keep you apprised. So far, we've had two hundred and three, four employees out on COVID leave throughout all this, making progress. Again, just want to keep you apprised. Thank you.
Anyone else? Joe? No, I don't want to put you on the spot. Thank you for being here to support us. That brings us to comments input from the general public, limited to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Comments can be made in person or remotely via WebEx and are limited to three minutes during the meeting. There can also be mailed, faxed, emailed, all those other ways. Is there anybody online that wishes to make a statement? Is there anyone present today that would wish to make a statement? Not seeing any. That brings us to, it exhausts our agenda, so I guess we have to adjourn. So I'll declare the meeting adjourned.